Okay, we are recording, captions are on. We're good to go. You know, you know, we just reset up, so maybe. This is something I need to press.
Here, we have ignition. We have power. Thank you, I appreciate the board checking on me, honestly.
Okay, we're.
So.
We're good, okay, we're good. All right, motion to open the meeting?
Second.
We'll call.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Trustee Lampier?
Aye.
Trustee Lakeith?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, is there any board member that would like to disclose any conflict of interest or anything pertaining to the agenda items before us?
I do not.
I think we mentioned this last time too, but Lisa and I are on the retirement resolutions, so we just probably won't vote on that.
And I'll explain why that came back.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
I do not.
I do not.
I do not.
Everybody said they don't, so we're good.
I got nothing to disclose, you know, everybody was curious.
Okay, do you want to give some clip notes on the meeting certificate?
It's just us so far, no ones joining by Zoom, but if they do, please raise your hand if you would like to speak, if you would like me to ask the board the question, put it in the Q and A, and I'll just ask everybody, be nice to each other, and let's move on.
There we go. Okay, first up, the multi-year capital plan RFP.
Okay, before we start that, I just want to introduce Francine Brokaw. She's our new deputy treasurer, she's welcome to our first budget meeting, so we're all going to be really nice tonight.
We're always nice.
Yeah, don't scare her, don't scare her.
Don't scare her. Tonight, and just so the board knows, tonight, we're going over a few things, and then I want to finish with going over what the board wants to see for the budget meetings, last year, you know, how I handed out things, if there's a different format or anything that we could change, okay? But, let's go to the multi-year capital plan.
It's a nice sort of housekeeping, just getting everybody set up and giving.
It's our initial, it's our initial throughout the ball, or whatever we'll say. We did not receive any bids on the RFP, I reached out to Bernie Donigan, and another vendor, another vendor, there was a little glitch, they didn't get the quote in. Bernie Donigan decided not to bid because they were concerned about giving us an overall total package cost, they'd rather go on an hourly rate, they felt that could be to their detriment. So, they said to contact them if we didn't have any bidders. My suggestion, since we do have someone else who does want to bid, and there's a little mild confusion with them, I said we put it back up to bid. I have it closing and coming in, because I kind of thought the board would want to go back up to bid, before our meeting on the 13th. So, we still can settle this in a way that's quickly timed.
Turning it around.
Yeah, because we had it out there already for a month, I think a couple more weeks, let's just send it back to the vendors, and just make sure we've done our due diligence in getting the quotes.
Can we modify it in a way that would allow for somebody to submit both an hourly or a single dollar amount?
We can do either way.
I think it would be interesting to see what Donigan's hourly rate would be.
Okay.
And possibly offer us a couple options.
I can amend the RFP to reflect that we'll take overall, for the whole package or hourly.
Yes.
And, I mean, my preference would be for a fixed dollar amount.
So would mine.
Yeah.
So would everybody.
So would mine, but then we would have control, I mean, then we would have to just make sure that we stay on time.
And we can go on. If we go to an hourly rate, we definitely have to watch our hours and later, we'll be finishing it up in a timely manner. So, I can amend it to reflect that, and legal is out, so we'll go forward.
I think that makes sense, right?
Yeah.
I agree with that, sure.
All right, so I just said, need authorization for the RFP to be due on February 13th.
As amended?
As amended.
Don't move.
Second?
I'll second.
We'll call?
One minute. Okay, Trustee Lakeith?
Aye.
Trustee Lampier?
Aye.
Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, well, that one went way too fast.
I know.
So.
Jeff just came in.
Wonderful, we'll give him a few minutes.
I know, he's got to get settled.
Jeff did amend the reserves from our conversation at our last board meeting. I also am providing to the board with discussions we had with the Internal Budget Committee, our recommendations on how to maneuver the current existing reserves that have the excess issues, the language or whatever, where we feel they would be the most beneficial. So, I tried to lay that out in an understandable fashion, so we can pick it off with just the discussion on the reserve language that Jeff read it, and see if we have any questions here. Jeff, do you have any comments?
He tested you.
Looks like a scene from The Birds Out There.
Really?
How much, there's probably two or three hundred geese circling overhead.
It's the thing with the geese right now in the village, have you noticed? Yeah, they're not my hunting. This way, no, this way, I know what to do.
There's always a lone one.
Yeah, they're kind of a mouth. Yeah.
Do I have any?
No, I'm just basically.
Any position to say, probably not.
No, I just basically showed that we, I showed you them, your updates on the reserves that we discussed last meeting.
No, thanks for doing this too, this is all good. We're moving things forward, which is really great.
Can you remind me the date by which the reserves need to be established by the?
Whenever the board chooses, yes.
We don't need to fund them, we won't fund them towards the end of the year.
Well, it's always good for us, we have some we'd like to maneuver money in, so we wouldn't hope to get them established and move the shift the funds.
That's the repurposing.
The repurposing.
Yeah.
The reallocation.
What do you want to do then?
I'd like to do it sooner than later.
Oh, I thought you said something by the fiscal year.
The end of the fiscal year, that's the second part of my comment, is the money that the board decided in the budget, if everything goes great, they would like to move into reserves. You need to have these reserves established before the fiscal year end.
So, the bottom line is, is that we can set up all the reserves and then fund them
At the end.
At the end of the year, you know, knowing.
You can set them up, doesn't mean you have to fund them immediately, it means they're available to be funded.
Yep, so that's true of existing reserves that will be reallocated, but also true of the excess at the end of the year. You're working already for reserves that now we have.
Right, and we're shifting, and I would say we'd want to do, I wouldn't wait till May, I would say we'd want to do whatever we're going to do by April, because I would like it done sooner than later, if, if we're able to fund those reserves. And Jeff is going to speak, because probably something I'm missing.
No, you're not missing anything, it's just that when you repurpose the unusable reserves, I suggested it all be done by a permissive referendum, because we don't know, well, probably not all, but we don't know what they are. There is nothing, they're just capital reserves, unusable and not properly designated, so are they really capital reserves? I don't know, but I think the safe, safe course is to pretend that they are and then repurpose them as such, which for some might, I believe it will be a resolution subject to a public carrier, and some will be subject to a reserve. So, that timeframe needs to be built into whatever you're thinking of.
Yeah. Yeah, a timeline. We're big on timelines right now, aren't we?
So, in this instance, just comment again on the timeline that you're referencing, that's a timeline specific to when these get funded, when we reallocate.
If you want, I'm just, the timeline would be that if you want to have it done by the end of this fiscal year, then you can back up from there, figure out where.
Yep.
I don't think there's any requirement that you have it done by this fiscal year. Is there?
Other than we.
Well, there is, the establishment of the reserves that the board is looking to do for this year, funding of that, if they want that to happen this year, has to be done before budgeting it, because they budgeted to put money into reserves.
Right, but that's just setting up the new reserve, that's not repurposing.
No, reallocation, that's a whole nother thing, but we want to shift that appropriately, which, you know, we should put that to bed.
Yeah.
But there's not a time crunch that there is.
No, there is not a time crunch to, but to me, you know, we've come this far, let's just finish it.
We should, even though it's not time sensitive, it's been hanging out for decades.
But some of these, yeah, decades is for sure.
Yeah.
Some of these reserves probably have to be set up, some to a resi- as well.
Exactly, so we need to sort that. Everybody clear on that? Okay, just a little.
Was there any question on the again?
There's 11 reserves that we haven't inspected, and I think they all, there's two more coming, two more coming, two or four. Okay, I did have a question, and it goes back to the annual comment. So, I think we had concluded the last meeting with the idea of using the word, the money's in this reserve may not be used for repairs which occur regularly, comma, annually, comma, or at shorter intervals.
And I don't think that wording really does what you want it to do.
So, this wording simply makes it annual?
No.
In what way?
It means that anyone.
Oh, you were just saying it in the general, okay.
Any one of the repair reserve, any one of the repair reserve.
The repairs, okay.
The new language says that the money's in this reserve may not be used for repairs which regularly recur annually.
Right, so that means that they are recurring, occurring regularly, they're recurring regularly on an annual basis.
Correct, so to me, that just simply means annually. I would rather have that be, the whole point of the discussion last time was to extend the regularity to something that may not be annual, biennial, for example. This does not do that.
Does it take us back, though, to the fact that we have a budget line annually for repairs, so in a sense, in my mind, it's referencing that?
To come back to it, though, I think the annual repair line doesn't necessarily mean annual repairs, it could be things that are biennial. And the challenge that I have is, let's take a great job, or whatever Zach was saying, that gets done biennially. These funds shouldn't be accessible for that biennial regular maintenance. So, so this is where our whole conversation last week ended with the terming of regular, which occur regularly, comma, annually, comma, or at shorter intervals.
So, I see where you're going with that.
So, what we don't want the repair to be is something that.
Happens consistently.
Yeah, like, I guess, you know, you want it to be for a roof, you don't want it to be for a consistent patch job on the sidewalk that you do every other year.
Right, right. Because that, we wanted to put in.
But, but to just.
You do something regularly every five years.
That's right.
Or every ten years.
So, I like the idea of just sticking in the word biennially. Instead of the regular word that we used last time, or annual word, and then looking at the New York State Comptroller's Office for repairs, they do, Jeff, to your wording here, it was pretty much when it was annual, was just simply word for word, right? But my preference would be for these repairs to not be the shorter term stuff, the couple of years, I'd rather have it be the longer term stuff.
You're also forgetting the stopgap there, the stopgap is the board. None of this can be accessed without board approval, and then sometimes it's subject to additional approvals. So, we're not going to come to you and say, I want to take from dessert fund a hundred dollars for a breakdown. If we're coming to you for that money, it's going to be something substantial, because normally it can be taken out of the village budget, or a contingency fund, or something like that.
Then I think very easily, a biennial comment makes sense, because you're not going to have anything, to your point that you just referenced, occurring biennially. So, this is just simply an added layer of protection for residents when we put money in these repair reserves.
I guess, yeah, I just want to clarify, so I understand what I, I think I'm in my simplified way of thinking about the budget, is that you want to make certain that we are properly budgeting for, let's, let's call it a, whatever repair we're talking about, and that we are not consistently taking out of this reserve fund to, to cover the shortcomings that we did not anticipate. So, we want to make certain that this is an emergency, it has to have very clear extenuating circumstances and guidelines before we use it like our, you know.
That's already really in place, because this is, I mean, has that ever happened?
No, and that's the purpose of a reserve, a reserve isn't, you wouldn't normally think to go to reserve or something like that.
It's not best practices to do that, and it would be not in compliance with the Comptroller's guidelines, even.
No, because.
So, why would we do that?
Just say if you.
I'm just trying to.
It's not that easily accessible.
You know, we're parsing this a bit, so I'm just trying to understand.
It's not, it's not like I can sit there and go, oh, we're sure I'm going to transfer. It, it's so many steps to use that reserve, that it's just built in that safety precaution.
I get it, but again, if all of these things hold true, that we're resting on the rules of future boards, we're resting on the fact that we're never going to tap into it, then what's the challenge with having it be biennial versus annual? Unless people want the ability to use it for biennial, why is there any resistance to this recommendation?
Well, yeah, okay, so conversely, what's the implication of simply putting in, in addition to word biennial, because you want it in there?
Right.
Okay, so, if there's, is there any implication of that?
No, it must, it must not, by law, must not be annually or less.
Well, then, there we go.
So, we can restrict it to biennial, annual?
The board wishes absolutely.
Okay, so it doesn't change the intention in terms of how we would access the reserve?
Yeah, it does. So that if you have a, something that comes up that occurs biennially, and you don't have the money for it, you don't do it, because you're, you know, you're not taking it out of the reserve.
I can't even.
I don't either.
I can't even, because anything like that is always a budgetary item, this discussion that something would be prompted, you know, it's, even if we have, let's say, a roof repair, we would budget, we know ahead, you would put it in your normal budget, unless your budget was so tight, unless, you know, you had a tree come into, I'm really pushing this, you had a tree fall on the roof, then it's like, oh my God, we didn't budget for this, we need thirty thousand, then you're going reasonably to the reserve. That's my point of the reserve.
Right.
It's not for.
Because that's, we're not going biennially.
Correct, it's not for, oh my gosh, we got gutters, we need to place them every five years, we're going to take it from there. No, that's not the purpose of a reserve.
I even, I even like the word biennial better than the regular, because to the point of having something done every five years, that's regular, right? And I think a reserve should be able to be used to fund that in advance on a five year basis, but I think under one and two years, you can put that in the budget. Right. So, I'd like for all the repair reserves to use the word biennial.
In addition to what's already there.
Well, we can go back to the original language and just insert the word biennial.
Jeff, do you have any additional thoughts on that?
No, that's whatever the board wants.
Well, I'm just saying in terms of the implications.
Well, I think we've all discussed, yeah, that, the implications were discussed.
Do we need a motion to change the language?
No, we just have to, sense of the board to tell me to do it. If three out of five of you are going to vote against biennially, it would be better to know it now, or later.
Is there anybody here that would vote against biennial?
Uh, not really, I mean, I guess if you want it in there, I, I just want to make sure.
We're never going to use it for annual, we're never going to use it for biennial.
To me, that's not the intent of a reserve.
Yeah.
That's right, I think we put it in there.
I just think it's.
Okay, that's everybody's answer.
Right, the answer to the why not, so biennial.
Okay, so we're directing Jeff.
Biennially?
Biennially.
Biennial.
Biennially.
Please grab the word.
Other than that, Jeff, hey, everyone look at me. And these are yours.
So.
Since I, biennial, high stock.
Biennially.
So, is the board comfortable moving through the resolutions tonight on the other ones outside of the repairs?
Well, can we even adopt these?
With, with the amendment?
Amendment?
Yeah.
Sure, as amended, yeah, sure.
Actually, maybe this is a good place to jump in here. First of all, I wanted to comment on, it looks like you're a solitaire player.
Or bingo.
I'm not, I'm not a card player.
Multi-bingo player.
Cards are not my strong suit.
That's what I've been thinking for the last twenty minutes.
How about me, Justin?
That's awesome, too. I don't know a card game or a sponsor. So, I just, I'm kind of thinking about things from a high level as we're going into this budget process here, and one thing that I was going back to was the, the guide from the Comptroller on understanding the budget process, which is pretty good. And so, it seems like, you know, we, we have a calendar, I think, I don't know if it's been published yet, I'm just trying to get a feel for the basic pieces. So, the, the calendar at some point has to be published, right, about what the different timeline pieces are, or is that?
The dates in the budget, future budget meetings are up on the calendar.
Okay, all right, so that's, that's the, and so then.
Yeah, that's always sorted out ahead of time, you know, and, and you all receive the dates, the memorandum from Dorothea, and, you know, we may or may not use all of the meeting dates, but they're, they're set aside essentially for that purpose.
Right, every other Tuesday. Right? Every other Tuesday.
So, I guess, in, in addition to, and pardon me if these questions are all a little basic, I'm just trying to get a high level understanding to make sure that everything falls into place. So, our, our job as fiduciaries, as I understand it, is to ultimately use the tentative budget that is approved, or that is proposed by the budget officer, and the budget officer is the mayor, correct?
So, here.
And so.
I think it's Dorothea.
Well, that's why I'm asking these questions, let's, let's talk about this.
I mean, she's the treasurer, so she's, we work in conjunction with each other.
Dorothea is, so according, and this is different from my understanding, so that's why I'm, I'm kind of asking some basic questions here, and I think identifying the person responsible is probably one of the, you know, that's the first thing in this packet, and probably one of the first things that we should figure out. So, my understanding, based on village law, is that the, the mayor is the budget officer, unless she designates, unless we have a manager model that entails that this is usually the treasurer, or unless she designates somebody else.
So, the mayor can designate it to Dorothea?
I understand that the mayor, yes, I believe that she probably could, based on my understanding of law, but Jeff would be the ones that.
Jeff's, he's looking through the law.
Not sure, I'm prepared to answer that question.
How was it done last year?
What?
How was it done last year?
My, my understanding has always been that the, the mayor in our system is the budget officer, maybe I'm wrong, maybe it's, I think Dorothea does a lot.
We all work together internally, I mean, would I designate you? Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
Maybe we should do that, I think.
We all worked, but, but, you know, I know, I don't know, I don't know if you recall the budget presentation last year?
Sure.
Okay, so, we worked on that as a team, essentially, and presented that to the board and to the public.
Yeah, I'm definitely not just feeding that, I'm just trying to figure this out possible.
Right, well, at the end of the day, the entire board is responsible, because we have fiduciary oversight of the budget.
Because we would vote on the budget, but if somebody proposes to kind of budget,
Right.
I want to figure out who that is.
Right, so, Jeff's looking through things, so.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not going to take the time to look through the board.
Okay, can he get back to us on that?
I will.
Because he's going to really drill down, because.
And so, I appreciate that, and I'm looking forward to figuring that out for the next meeting. The, now, as, as far as, there, there are a lot of things that come to the, the budget officer here, so according to the, the village calendar, we're talking about the budget officer notifying, and this is getting to the next piece here, which I think is identifying the different pieces of information that we need to assess whether or not we're on track of the budget. So, you know, when, when we come to, I, I think this is a, a good process overall, you know, we're kind of trying to build the consensus early in the process to, to figure out if this is a budget that we're ultimately going to support. At the, at the same time, you know, ultimately, it is, it is the, we're, we're kind of premature in the process here too, because according to the way this process is prescribed, is the budget officer preparing the tentative budget, and then proposing it to the board, and then we evaluate it based on all the information to make a decision. So, you know, in, in some ways, the, the meeting items for tonight on the reserve funds, which brings me back to why I'm, I'm going down this path, you know, generally, I don't figure out, you know, for my company or individually, what accounts I need until I know what I'm saving for, right? And, you know, it's all kind of driven by what the ultimate trajectory is here, and what our common goals are, which is back to the, the capital plan. So, you know, the question about whether or not I can vote on these, like, I don't really know, because I don't know what we're, you know, what the three-year plan is here, which is a primary focus of what the board is trying to ascertain. So, I, you know, I'd like to have a little bit better idea of that. Likewise, with the, the next item on the agenda, with the sewer allocation, you know, I can't really evaluate what I would allocate to sewer until I've got this bigger picture, which partially goes into one of the next things that comes up in the budget calendar, which is that if we're on a June 1st fiscal calendar, the budget officer, again, we need to establish who that is, notifies the heads of administrative units in writing of the necessity for and form of estimates of revenues and expenditures for the ensuing fiscal year. So, when we're evaluating stuff, it's like, okay, you know, who, get Zach, and, you know, from, from the office side here, what do we, what does everybody think we're going to spend? And then looking at what the projected revenue is, looking at the multi-year capital plan, which is in process, and then I can see if, you know, this solitary organization is, is the, you know, the right way to, to put money into different accounts, and, and figure out whether or not the sewer allocations are, are right. But I guess I'm kind of in the dark about the specific items, until we establish some of these basic, basic pieces, the, you know, roles and responsibilities, the, the different high-level fiscal expenditures, revenues, and what the, the capital plannings.
It would have been helpful if you had put this in a memorandum to the board prior to this meeting, so, you know, we could have had the information.
Well, let me sort it through. Over what's been done towards the budget, since, whether I'm acting as the budget officer or not, with the blessing of the mayor, anything I've given to the board in the past has been reviewed by the mayor before it's been presented, so if she was acting as the budget officer, I would say that covers that. We've already reached out to all the departments, we are already gathering the estimates needed, I've already reached out to all the attorneys, our large vendor items, asking for estimates and quotes for the upcoming year, so we've already started that part.
Village engineer.
Village engineer, all that's been done. I've already started my spreadsheets. I'm ready to roll. I just don't have all my estimates in, and I'd rather not present the board a spreadsheet that isn't complete.
And Dorothea, you're doing basically what you do every year? This is by the time you do this every year, right?
Yes, this is what I have done.
So, you're doing what you do every year?
This is exactly the same practice I did last year. The internal budget committee has met twice with those needs and going over. One of the things that was brought in the past to me is the start to talk about multi-year reserves and all that in the beginning, that's what I'm trying to do. The discussion of the sewer allocation, I can't even touch budget until we resolve that.
Yes.
The board left that wide open last year, and I can't even begin to look at budget numbers this year without the board's determination. So, you know, you decided to proceed as you had, leave it as it was in the past last year, I'm going to argue against that this year very strongly. We need a determination. I can't give you spreadsheets that wouldn't be physically responsible to give you spreadsheets without some kind of determination, because it's high in the sky until I get that.
Everything is derivative of the two separate.
Correct.
Task bases.
Correct.
Going into our budget, and that actually was part of the presentation made last year.
Correct, and I was hoping we could iron all that out early, so I can start putting solid numbers, so we don't, I don't put something together, the mayor blesses it, I present So we don't, I don't put something together, the mayor blesses it, I present it to you and you go, nope, because I'm not wasting my time, I'm really not.
And at any point in time, you certainly can, you know, reach out to the treasurer and, you know, talk about things with the treasurer. She's here, she works for the village and for all of us, so.
So I think the process is moving forward as described by the comptroller. It's the same process that was used prior to me, it's just, it's the process. The reserves have been hanging fruit that need to be resolved. These are reserves that staff and board members feel we need. So it's not, you know, should we have them, it's, you know, we need to have them. So we need to establish it. This is, at the end of the day, it is the board's determination now. I'm not gonna say, you know, you need to make that decision. But this is our opening process and I, and what I wanted to do was end the meeting and go over what you want to see every budget meeting. Because I send you out the spreadsheets. Do you want to see those spreadsheets? Do you want them printed? What would you like? I just want to make sure I'm giving you out the tools that you can see and do the budget with me and you're good to go. I don't want you, I'm going to say, oh, it'd be nice if we had this. I know that upfront, we know.
And as Dorothea, just to add in, as Dorothea said, you know, she's pulled together the spreadsheets, she's ready to go. We all worked on that, we already had a review, you know? But we can't finalize things until sewer, fund, and general.
That's the only piece of it, I knew sewer and I made all the estimates and they're coming in. And I haven't gotten the final assessment numbers from the town yet, from the assessor.
You're reaching out to them.
There's blanks and I'm not going to present you a spreadsheet that's not balanced with blanks. I just don't feel that's productive at all.
And, and, you know, just because you guys are, you know, new to this particular process, you, basically, when you kind of do the first deep dive in with the spreadsheets, and Lily, you know this too, and Justin's seen that, it is presented as balanced. In other words, it's the starting point for how we will look at the budget and then there's the tweaking and tuning and, oh, what about the, you know, with the whole board.
That's where you make that slide in there.
As a practical matter, and this is certainly how municipalities work, the boards are presented with a balanced budget as a starting point. And they can say, wow, it looks great, we're good. Or, how about this, how about that, you know? So it's not like you're at ground zero trying to create the budget because things carry over from years before. We see that, you know, how things are, you know, you look at sales tax estimates, you look at revenues coming in, that's why you're looking, reaching out to the assessor, what do we have coming in?
And we'll pretty much go line by line.
Yeah.
When we start with revenues and when we go through expenses.
So can I just try to understand this? This isn't what I'm thinking of in my mind, because I think there's two things going on here. The status quo, which has been going on forever, you know, you guys have found the same process that has to be done every year in order for us to be on a timeline for the budget out, right? That's going on and that's what you guys do. And I think Justin's stepping in, right, that's what has to be done, it's time-sensitive, it's all. And I think what Justin's saying is that, yes, he understands that and it does need to move forward, but it's making it hard for him to really be responsible to pass a budget when he doesn't have that long-term capital plan, which is kind of the new buzzword that has come in since I've been here and since we've been pushing that. I mean, even the reserve thing, they kind of pushed onto the reserves, so that's a whole new piece of this.
The reserves were initiated the first year I was.
Right, and these specific stuff and like trying to.
No, I'm glad, I'm glad we're finally getting to it.
So those two pieces are significantly impacting, you know, the financials here, but we also have the process that you're doing that's got to keep rolling. So I guess the question is, how do we make it work so that we can continue rolling with the budget that you guys always do, but then also be sensitive about the long-term capital plan? And how do we integrate that enough so that Justin feels comfortable and that we can get this moving for future so we're not behind eight ball on the funding?
And this isn't, you're not going to have a multi-year capital plan unless we can get a vendor that can turn it out in days and weeks. And that's not going to happen. I, I'm telling you, it's going to take a couple months. You're not going to have it in place.
And that's what we're.
You have to have a budget in place. You cannot move forward without a budget. You don't, you know, if you don't want to fund reserves, you don't want to do any capital projects, you want to keep status quo, you, fine, don't do that, but that's not responsible. We still have things we have to do, so you need a budget.
And that's what I was saying, so this big long-term capital plan is not going to just happen.
It's not going to be miraculously overnight.
So tell me what you think about that, Justin, because I don't know.
I'd like to just jump in real quick here too. We all want to have the long-term capital plan. I mean, I think we're all excited about that and we see that as definitely a way to go. But again, it is the time constraints that we're under. And especially now with RFP going out and then going out again and do we get a vendor back? And then we, you know, it's, it's a process. It doesn't mean that we don't do the capital plan, you know, we still are working towards that. You know, we're not giving up.
And we still have the tools, we still have the Excel sheets. For me, we have Excel sheets from the DPW on road schedules, equipment schedules. So parts of that are available. Is it to the detail that a multi-year capital plan? And then again, that's an argument that we've been having, what needs to be in the plan. But we.
We just don't have that anymore. We know it has to be in the capital plan.
Why?
Step-by-step, yeah.
Yeah.
What was that?
Yeah, just the statute.
So we know what has to be in the capital program, it's all by the way.
Was it GL?
But we have the tools that we have used every year to establish a budget available to us right now.
Yeah, yeah, Lily.
And that, that is a burning question for me. Is it possible, I understand the timeline with, you know, with getting an outside entity to commit into that, let's say that that is the longer-range goal. The short-term goal is that, are you indicating that it is possible for the internal budget team to present to the board a multi-year capital plan? Let's call it simplified, you know.
Yes, start the initial work, you mean, really get it up and kind of get it pulled together.
That we work for, or we can all get on board with. At the same time, on a parallel track is running the professional team working on a more fleshed-out capital, long-range capital plan. But we have a more simplified version that we can all agree on, but we do have on paper and that we have all agreed upon and voted on, a long-range capital plan.
As a guide to help us.
We have the tools that we've had in.
The mild and simplifying things, I have a way of doing that because I don't understand the financial picture very well. So I have to simplify it so that I can understand.
I think you have the same tools you've had always to your availability. You have the sheets, you've had our spending habits, you've had all that, we've had that part, the financial part. We also have had in the past our equipment schedules, our road schedules, all the other. And I think that's even been expanded far above what it was in the past. So we have all those tools available to us.
We just didn't have the name at the top of the page.
If you want to put into a binder and label multi-year capital, I mean, I think, is there some pieces that might be missing? Yes, do we have a simplified version that we have used in the past? Absolutely.
We sure do.
Because what, that's what Zach's going to go to when he says he needs certain equipment or he's suggesting roads, he's going to the schedule, the schedule.
And the schedule's out, you know, two, three, five years, I mean, the schedule is, they're longer-term schedules.
We just need it all put together, so.
Correct, and that would be something that would be presented in the next meeting.
And that's what the mayor, in her capacity as financial officer, along with another financial officer, has been talking about.
Right. No, things is, then I'll be presenting them to the board.
Really where we need to go.
In their face, I think they were forwarded to the board at one point here. So you have seen those schedules, they were sent out. So will, those can be and will be included in the next packet for the next budget.
What do you think of my staging?
I think this is all very helpful and, and of course, my emphasis here and my point is not to blame anybody or to say that, you know, we haven't done some of these things. My, my point is to achieve a good outcome with a budget that we all feel good about and which sustainably manages the village.
I think we're all in agreement, yeah.
And, you know, I think that while some of these places, some of these pieces have been in place, I've had some concerns over the last three budgets that I've voted on. I feel like we can do better with, you know, so I voted against two of those the first couple of years that was on the board. And then the third one, I worked with Dave especially and Dorothea to ensure that we had a different budget, which basically depended on the creation of a long-term capital plan. So there's more of a diversion to, to revenue that would be diverted into these reserve funds, for example, so that we could really depend on, on a longer-term, more cohesive plan.
So going forward, what do you want to see? Because, you know, I think we need to make sure we're all on the same page, at least for the, to get through our budget cycle, you know?
Right, that's, that's exactly what, what I'm coming to here. I believe that our, our input at this point, or what we're doing at this point, is not so much line by line, looking over, you know, is this appropriate, is this appropriate? You know, is it the bottom of the solitaire deck or is it like, you know, two-thirds of it or whatever? It's basically trying to figure out if all of the inputs are good, right? And, and so these inputs are not, and essentially, I think that if we have good inputs, we'll get good outputs. You know, and so specifically here, if the, if our understanding of the high-level financials is, is well-founded, then we're going to very easily be able to assess the tentative budget prepared by the budget officer to say, this is physically responsible or if this is not. So what I would like to see here is more of, less of a focus on, to me, these things are kind of outputs. You know, where you divert the funds with the reserves is kind of an output. Not to negate any of this work, this is all good work and it's likely that, you know, 80% of these are where we want them, but this is on the output side. The sewer allocation, you know, we can definitely have some discussions around that, but ultimately, I think that's a diversion of funds on the output side. You know, that's kind of a result. So what I would like to see instead of some of this output-side stuff is the input-side numbers. So looking at that, you know, Dorothea, you've done a good job of putting together the multi-year capital plan spreadsheet. I think, you know, basically, we need to start, first of all, who's responsible? We're going to figure that out right away. We need to figure out what the, you know, take a look at overall the calendar here and what the input pieces are that we need. You know, we haven't really talked about, as, as board members, you know, if we're going to vote on this final budget, do we have these, these crucial pieces of input? So one of them is, you know, whatever form the capital plan is, what the expenses are from the different departments, what the revenue estimates are, you know, these high-level revenues and expenses things, so that we can make sure that, you know, we're asking for the right stuff upfront, we're evaluating it throughout the process. And then when it comes down to the proposed budget, it's, it should be relatively easy to say yes or no. This is on track. So that's, that's what I'm looking for from high level.
And most of those pieces are there.
The next meeting would be discussing the incoming revenues for general and the tentative request from the departments for expenditures. That is my next agenda for the next budget meeting. And then we finish with those same exact things for sewer, because sewer is usually the easier of the budgets.
Great.
That's how we did it last year. We discussed, we focused the meetings because we try to keep these meetings short, sweet and give you exactly what you need to move forward. So we go through, we talk revenues at one point, then we talk expenditures. The revenue conversation is a lot easier than the expenditures. But to roll all that out, we're not quite there yet because this was our opening round.
Yeah, this was a starting point.
So, yes, it has been in the past broken that way and it will continue to be that way. Just so we have all those pieces. I don't have all those pieces yet, as I said.
Yeah, you gave us the update on where you are with that.
I'm waiting on all those pieces.
So just a couple quick comments. So last year, Justin, you referenced the budget process that we did allocate and looking at the general. Last year, we allocated 138,000, 139,000 of the budget to reserves. Those reserves that weren't yet written to the general were vehicle reserve, vehicle repair reserve, though there is nothing in that line, technology reserve, which we don't have.
Well, that's a combined with another.
You combined, okay, so that might be in the.
It's in equipment, yeah.
Okay, so you're seeing, you're considering that equipment?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So then there's a equipment, vehicle, equipment and vehicle, wherein technology is considered equipment, okay? Is that okay as a type together? See no problem with that? Okay, okay. So then we're combining the technology and vehicle equipment line for the general. That's roughly 35,000, a little under. We have a building repair, so that would be 17,000 and change. That would be infrastructure repair, if I'm not mistaken. No, that would be, there's a building specifically.
Building replacement improvement.
Yeah, there's a straight-up building repair reserve. We have an infrastructure reserve, 86,000. Now, that's the one where we're essentially putting money into an account with the idea that that would be used for the bond. So were you writing a bond reserve?
That's the debt reserve for the bond and debt.
Correct, I have another.
Okay, so one of these line items in the budget last year will definitively need to be, based on the way we did the budget, a debt reserve, not the infrastructure reserve. Do we need to make motions to move that or we just make decisions?
We'll make that decision at the end.
We didn't fund infrastructure repair reserve. We didn't fund infrastructure reserve not related to the debt. And we didn't fund general repair reserve. What's interesting here, and this speaks a little bit, Justin, to the comments on cart before the horse, right? That's a long-term plan, we don't know exactly, right, how many of these line items we're going to need, but we know we're going to need them before the end of the year. We can make a decision to adopt some of the reserve language on some of them or all of them. If we don't fund them, there's no work to the clerk, right?
They just exist.
They just exist in space.
And when you're ready to fund them.
And if we want to fund them, we fund them.
They're just simply just created.
Yes, they're created, it's a creation.
In the sewer, just to do the same thing for a moment as we did in the general, the sewer has eight reserves noted and no funding. In the prior year, the adopted budget, 2022, 23, did reflect on funds going into reserves in the sewer. There was equipment reserve, repair reserve, shared highway expenses, though nothing there, vehicle repair, Wood Creek, Pittsburgh Pub Reserve, and facilities reserve. It's possible we did fund them, I don't recall.
No, we didn't.
Okay, so then that's just in the, the.
They were pre-existing, I think, that budget, actually, I think it was the 21, 22. Because I did 23, 24.
You did 23, 24.
And 20, now, this is the second tool, I kind of jumped in at the other one. I think there was a planning to do some funds into those reserves. We pulled them because of the concerns with the language and everything. It wasn't appropriate to tie more money up when you couldn't completely access it.
Right, that was, that was the discussion was about the language.
Okay.
You know, why fund a reserve when you can't access the funds based on the fact that the language does not enable you to do it?
Sure.
Yeah.
So one of the things that we could do in reflection of what was passed in 22 and 23, though we have no allocated capital to in 23, 24, we could at the end of this fiscal year decide with the $27,000 that should have been allocated to reserves in 2022, 23, we can make a decision sort of retroactively to use any excess or the general to put it into the reserves that we create that are based on.
And you have a better understanding at the end of the meeting.
Yeah, right, after we've discussed it all.
But it's this idea, like, in a way, I sort of feel like we owe the public $27,000 of reserve funding from two years ago budget, even though last year we didn't put anything in the budget, right? This goes back to a couple things. Because we can create the reserve language and we know based on last year's budget, we've already earmarked certain things that we fund, I think, for me anyway, it's okay to create them. It's the funding part that I'm going to have some hesitation with until the long-term capital plan is really defined well. And this is going to speak a little bit to the reallocation of the existing reserves in the sewer to the identified reserves. But I don't mind creating them, I just want some to know that just because they're there, it doesn't mean I want to immediately utilize them until we work through some of the long-term plan.
Maybe fund them.
Yeah, fund them. As far as the long-term capital plan is concerned, obviously, we put it out to reserve. You know, there may be a lot of language and work already done internally. It's got to be conveyable to the public, right? We've got a May 1 adoption deadline for the budget. If we get somebody in here March 1, that's two months, right? Hopefully, we can get something sorted together in a two-month time period with a consultant who's bidding on a project. We'll find out, maybe not, but it would be my intent, again, with this budget coming up, to fund reserves and we have some language now that as we parse it out, if we haven't created, we can insert them in those line items and make decisions. Again, we don't have to make the decision as to how much to fund in each definitively until the end of the year, but I think it'd be nice to have that discussion as part of the budget process, whether we want to start advance funding.
But again, we never know till the end of the year. I mean, that's, that's, you know, you really, I think you're really speaking to something that has always been an issue, the timing of when we do our budget. that has always been an issue, the timing of when we do our budget. You know, for for villages in New York State, you're not even through your fiscal year, you know, and it's it's always.
Actually, the plan was to end on funding of the existing reserves and also looking at our fund balance policy because our fund balance policy is a five to ten percent of our budgeted overall budget must be retained in fund balance. I think that's too low. I would like to see it increased. And then we can take a look at what is the overage in the fund balance and then shift it to the appropriate reserves because that is where we got in trouble with the comptroller in the past, especially with the sewer. And I think we could see that coming again. So I want to make sure you, the comptroller doesn't want to see you have so much in fund balance that it's not designated.
Are you saying we have more than we need or less than we need?
We have more than we need.
Now we have.
We always have more than we need in sewer. I think the latest number on the spreadsheet was about forty two percent in general.
They start questioning why you have.
It's difficult, sorry to interrupt.
Going up with your sewer rents.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would like to, with any of the excess fund balance allocated to reserves, right? But I don't want to allocate it to reserves until I know how much each reserve needs and I don't know how much each reserve needs until I know what the long term capital plan says, right? And orders it all, and then we have to prioritize it.
Correct.
And there's some amount of weighting that goes into that. Are we overweighting roads or are we overweighting repairs? Are we like, what is our priority? Is it the purchase of trucks and vehicles? So.
That's the discussion that we need to have with the input of department heads.
Yeah.
So let me ask you, so you're saying that you don't have any trouble voting on these reserve funds to to open them? You don't want to put anything in there, including relocation of what we have yet until you see more of a long term capital plan?
Yes, I think that's fair. One of the challenges with reallocation of the sewer funds, so let's say we go through and we open all these reserves, now there's this potential push to a degree, right, of getting things reallocated and in these right buckets. I'm a hundred percent against that, right? What I want to do is define, we need to have a discussion to define how are we going to allocate sewer costs first, right? And so that's maybe today, maybe not. I think I'd like to do a little, I'd like to see where we are, what you're proposing and and what the comptroller suggests as the how. And then we have a meeting specifically dedicated to answer that. That can be a half hour discussion, forty five minute discussion, it could be longer, but I'd like to see the, here's exactly what we're doing now from a spreadsheet perspective. Here's what I think we should do. Now, I know you've done that last year and we resisted, so.
I that's what I need to know. I need to know what it's been since, because last year I had, let me just confirm, let me go over this real quick. Let me confirm what I did last year, okay? I had our accountant come in twice, we had it reviewed by the comptroller, discussion with the comptroller, we had our attorney agree, everybody was agreeing the process that we set forth for that, that the way.
The allocation.
The money should have been sorted to the sewer's responsibility.
Let her finish, please.
But the board decided that they didn't want to move forward. I had one board decide to move forward and then I had one board decide not to move forward. I don't think I'm saying anything out of turn, that's exactly what happened. I don't know what it's going to take, and I'm being condescending, what it's going to take for this board to give me how you want to see it allocated, what math you want me to use, a different process because the process I presented wasn't acceptable or you weren't comfortable. I need I need to.
And what what is the empirical evidence to counter the presentation that we gave to the board, to boards? What is the empirical data to not do what the recommendations are from the comptroller's office, from the treasurer, from the financial advisors? I think that's an important part of the conversation.
Right. I'll just speak a couple of things. My understanding is you did present to the attorneys and you did present to the comptroller's office how you were calculating the allocation of the reserves.
Yes.
In no way were they going to argue the numbers or the specifics as to the percentages that you use for any given cost. They just wanted to make sure that you had a method by which you were calculating it and presenting it back to us. So while, yes, I agree that you listed out the people who reviewed it, they were reviewing it from a legal perspective and a and a best, like, recommendation.
Best practice.
Best practice, but what they weren't doing is suggesting, positive or negatively, that the actual allocation of expenses was correct. They were just simply saying, you have a method by which you've done it, that we agree with the method by which you've done it. So this goes back to your comment, which is, why do you disagree with the allocation that we presented? And I'll say it slightly different, why do you disagree with the way it's been done? Meaning, for me to move off of where it is now and how it's always been done, I need to have empirical evidence. I'm not just going to jump to this new process and then back to. So here's my thought. Last year, the allocation of costs was higher than I was comfortable, right? By a considerable degree. I think the sewer deserves an allocation of some of the expenses that you may have presented, right? But not to a degree. So this is why for me to have some input back to you to to understand and for all of us to have some input back as to what we'd like to see this year, here's where we are, here's what the budget officers would like to see, and then we make a determination as to what it will be. Because whatever we make that determination that it will be, as long as it is reasonably thought out and presented, the comptroller's going to be fine with it, the attorneys are going to be fine with it, and it's going to be able to move forward.
Understood, but we were dinged in an audit about the two separating the funds.
Correct, because there are two different.
What Dorothy was doing was responding to the ding from the comptroller's office.
It's two separate tax bases, so obviously, I went with math. I used an Excel spreadsheet, did the math, found a way of calculating appropriate percentage that the comptroller's office was looking for, everybody was looking for. The lines that I used to reallocate, whether you agree or not agree as to why they should have been allocated, that is a discussion that.
Correct.
Happened, everybody seemed comfortable. But again, we'll go through that process, but what I need from the board, what, how do you want me to get to that number?
That's right.
Because I can tell you there's many villages that throw a dartboard and say, I have two funds, I'm going to go fifty.
They just divide it.
Or I have three funds, I'm going to go thirty, 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 three. I didn't do that. I actually took some math, calculated a percentage and went to twenty two percent. So I don't think I was trying to overcharge sewer and I don't think I was looking to undercharge sewer. What I was trying to do is find a simple, a formula that needs sense for the number to be charged for the appropriation. So what I need from the board is, if you don't like how I got to that number, how would you like me to get to that number? Because I think it's essential, before we even start putting the budget together, that I have the appropriate appropriation.
And what the direction from the board in terms of what you would like to see, again, should be vetted with the comptroller's, you know, in other words, that's all still part of the process to make sure that it's part of the best practice.
You're never going to place a judgment on what we give.
No, I would give it to our accountant, make sure again, it follows our financial guys or whatever.
Even the accountant is not going to give judgments to whether or not.
No, he's going to say my methodology is fine.
He's going to say you have a methodology, it's.
Having a methodology puts me ahead of several villages that just picked an average.
Oh, I believe it would.
So at the end, whether or not it's twenty two or sixteen, the accountant's going to be okay with that, the comptroller's going to be okay with that. And so what our job is to understand how we allocate it and what numbers are we comfortable.
How you want to allocate, that is the board's decision.
So what so what does Dorothy need from us so that when she's doing her work, she's doing it in the right format?
Let me put it this way, okay? We know, I know, already taking a look at the method I used last year to get to that allocation, I'm still at twenty two percent, which was based off, as I can explain, was based off the salaries and percentage of each employee's salary that's charged to sewer, taking overall average, that came to twenty two percent of salaries go to sewer, which to me allocates to the percentage of time overall done from the village staff on sewer projects. Now, twenty two percent is my number I'm throwing out to the board again. Now, if you're not comfortable with twenty two percent, which I'm hearing, give me a percentage, give me a starting.
But this is what I don't understand. This is where I get hung up, so I want you all to help me with this. We have a treasurer who has come up with a thought out methodology and a practice, you know, really tracking with DPW's time and, you know, and also what's used in our facilities here, just to support, I'm using sewer fund as the example. And I I kind of get hung up as, how do you come up with the number to give her? Like, what's, how are you deriving that? Where's that derivation come from? We've just heard her methodology. What what would it be from this board to direct her to somehow change it and to change the methodology? And how does that serve sort of the overall fiduciary responsibility and best practices?
Sure. Thank you. I appreciate the the thought behind this and this is something that we've discussed, I guess. My, ultimately, what I what I want to achieve here, which I think is also our legal requirement, is that the sewer cannot be a revenue center for other areas of village governance. And I think that, you know, that's that's a legal requirement, as far as I know, that we're not, you know, taking money that comes in here and distributing elsewhere. And and I think it's also an obligation to, you know, people like the the folks who live over in Wood Creek, because they're part of the sewer district but not part of the municipality, they're not part of the village. So, you know, I think it's also a special, an especially important obligation because of facts like that with slightly different boundaries. You know, my, some of my concern around the sewer and the reason that I want to make sure we've got especially good inputs to base our decision on about where the the line falls is that for years, we were increasing the sewer rents by about ten percent, was it? That was the the standard practice for, how many years was that, that we did that for?
That started, I don't know, two thousand fifteen.
I was going to say at least ten years ago.
Yeah, because the the point of doing that was to raise capital to start the reserve for the site.
So I I think all that is good and I'm I'm not doubting the the particular number. I just want to make sure that, you know, we're we're not funding things that are not obviously sewer related from from that revenue. And so I I just want to make sure that we're taking a close look. The other thing that I did mention, so I think, you know, having any data points here, considering recirculating those spreadsheets about how you came up with that, I remember looking at it before, but I think I need to look at it again.
That'd be great.
And and I think the other the other piece that I that I mentioned in a previous meeting that probably got lost among the shuffle is that I want to compare what we're spending on sewer operations. You know, if we say, hey, this is what it costs to operate the sewer, how does that compare to what other municipalities spend? So, you know, basically, that's that's based on the the gallons of influent water to people's systems, right? And and we just have a proportion of of that that is is billed to the the sewer. So how do we compare with what the town is doing, for example, based on gallons?
We wouldn't compare. We have a different type of sewer thing. We don't have a sewer plant. We just have lines. So we just maintenance and repair. And I would say, looking at our past budgets, do not reflect the accurate cost of what it takes to run the sewer because I think you have the opposite problem. You're looking to protect the sewer, I'm looking to protect general. Right now, we're using general funds to cover sewer and they're two separate tax bases. So as you said, Wood Creek, we're giving gifting to Wood Creek because sewer doesn't pay for insurance. We've had several large lawsuits that have come out of sewer. How is that appropriate?
Well, I I think there there are different ways of of looking at this. I guess what I'm asking is, how do we understand what's a reasonable amount to spend on maintaining the sewer system?
I think unfortunately, our past data, it will cover repair and maintenance, but it's not covering running the fund because it was treated in that protective measure. It wasn't charged for, and even beyond my time, it wasn't charged for staff time, it wasn't charged for insurance, it was not charged for gas utilities. There are certain things that were included in those lines that it takes to run a sewer department. If you had the sewer department, it would have a separate office, it would pay for R G and E, it would pay for cable.
And it came out of general.
It came all out of general.
And that's why we were dinged by the comptroller.
So I I don't think our existing sewer budgets have been reflective of the overall cost of running that department.
And I think now, really, just within the last couple of years, that's really what you you were bringing back to the board, that this is really, this is the truth of how those two separate tax bases and departments really should be run. Yeah. Dave.
So thinking about last year's budgeting process, obviously, there was a fairly quick adjustment of how we were looking at things, right? And we kept the sewer allocation as it was. There was some discussion from the public, broadly speaking, I'm very comfortable revisiting it. I think there are things, for example, that we're doing, for example, a portion of the mayor's job, a portion of the trustees' job in twenty to twenty one, twenty one to twenty two, there was no allocation. And then we did in twenty twenty two, twenty three and twenty three, twenty four, allocate costs of, you know, the mayor and trustees. We also, to your point, we haven't allocated some of the utility costs and things like that, but what I don't want to do is allocate that at twenty two percent, right? The sewer, if you look at how the twenty two percent is determined, it was time of labor, time of staff possibly, but certainly time of labor, right? And to apply that to all items across the sewer, to me, doesn't feel quite right. And the sewer doesn't need the full village hall to operate, you can put a, you know.
And it's not allocated that way.
It's not allocated.
Well, so this is what, this is where we want, I want to go through the review process of looking at all the different items that we're looking to allocate to sewer and what the percentages that you're suggesting would be. And then we can either go backward or forward, but at least have the discussion. I'm not saying that we don't do it, I just need to see, here's where you, here's where we are, here's what you think we should do, and then we can talk it through.
Okay, so you should send out, I mean, I like the idea of sending out the material again, you know, that you put together, I think that'll be a helpful starting point.
I think that is good. I mean, I think that we can look at this in in terms of the the general approach and the different data points that I'd like to look at are, what are we spending, right? That's that's kind of what we're talking about here, you know, what is actually sewer related, what's not, that's one part of the equation. The other valid question still, I think, is what should we be spending? And I I think it's worthwhile, there's got to be some way to understand, you know, there's, this is, we're not the only municipality providing sewer services, so there's got to be a way to to get to some kind of a number. And then third, what amount of money will be needed, you know, trajectory of, and and this is part of the financial.
So forecasting, essentially doing the financial forecast going forward.
Yeah.
I just know, working from Webster, it was fifty fifty. It wasn't a, it wasn't a set, so again, but then they changed it.
Let's do a survey, but let's let's reach out, I think that's a good idea, let's reach out, okay? We can do that.
We'll definitely reach out and see how they break up their.
Their models, what's their overall budget. Forecast as well. You know, we've got the three, I just want to circle back. What are we actually spending? What should we be spending? And the the forecasting of what's needed going forward? Okay, so now we have those three sort of items to to use to survey villages. What is every, how do they, how do they come up with this model regardless? Okay, so I think I think we we can try to get that as quickly as possible because I think that's sort of the core of, you know, if I'm under, I just want to make sure I'm understanding, I don't want to say words that you could say.
She's kind of a shot in the dark from my side, I haven't really.
Is it reasonable? So just to think about how we get this, when you go out and ask for how did you allocate, could you ask as well what their rate per, like, we charge on a what, per gallon?
Per gallon, based on influent water into the system.
Okay, so we have a per gallon, we have a per gallon cost, we can't think of it per resident, we think about it per gallon. So we could get from any other municipality, what is their per gallon cost?
Sure.
Right? That would be an interesting, that's probably the best we're going to get as to what should it cost, right? So if we get in five or six other municipalities and we're an outlier, way high, way low, right in the middle.
Exactly.
Useful.
So it's, what's nice is we're bringing back data, you know, we're bringing back data.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's sort of on target there, you know?
And I would try to just focus on village sewer districts, but I don't know if that's.
I don't think you're going to have enough to do that with. I will reach out to all the villages automatically.
Yeah.
We talked to Alagaville. Alagaville is a village and a town, very similar to ours.
What about Skeneatalis? I'm just trying to think of other, you know what?
Is Skinniatalus a village as well?
I have a NICOM meeting tomorrow, it's the Women's Advisory Committee, and they're all the villages, so I can, I'll put it out to the group, and then everybody's really great about responding, you know?
Yeah, but I like that idea of villages.
So I'll, I'll float it, you know, so it's a little more statewide, not just the county, because we don't have that many villages here.
It would be nice to try to be a suburb of a middle-sized city though, right? For example, Ellicottville may be a good, similar size, but your costs are going to be radically different in Ellicottville.
Oh, yeah, because of the sewer, because of the water.
The cost of neighbors a lot less and other things.
Right.
But I do like that idea, and I think that's probably the best way we can get it.
Skinniatalus.
But anyway, yeah, so where are we now? What are we doing, right? How do we get these numbers into last year's budget? What are you thinking we should do? Which might just be trying to pull one of the old versions of last year's budget that you still have floating around, saying this is what I want to do, right? And then we talk it through.
So here's my suggestion to the board. I'll present my initial numbers. I'll use 22% because.
It's a starting point.
It's a starting point.
It's all a starting point.
I will take a look at the items that really feel essential for this year to start moving. I won't have as many as I did last year, and just get us a starting point.
It, that makes sense. And we're doing this early enough in the process now, where if you bring forward, you know, the budget and say, here's what I'm doing, we can hammer out what we like or not.
I'll give you the bare bones of what I think sewer should be covered.
We always do it, yeah.
Right?
That should be.
Okay, so we've got some action items, everybody feels that we've got, okay.
As far as the action items, I, I want to be really transparent about what I'm, I'm looking for. So in, in the Understanding the Budget Process, there's a lot of stuff that we have talked about, you know, but this is just the, I'm, I'm just looking at page three in Understanding the Budget Process, they've got a list of about a dozen items that.
What document are you in, sorry?
This is the Controller's Guide.
Oh, yeah, yep.
So page three, they have a list of the inputs, you know, things like the taxpayer capital plan, prior year's financial reports. I think we do almost all of these, but I think this is a good baseline checklist. Like, at the start of the process, I'd like to say, these are the things we have, this is what we're working on, this is what we're going to review.
So let's do, yeah, we'll do the checklist sheet.
Sure. Yep, okay.
No, that's, that's great, that's great, everybody.
Everybody in their budget packet wants to see the H1L sheets like I did in the past, so they can play with the numbers there as well. And then the large-sized printed ones, because nobody can get on anything.
Why would you want to read it too tight?
We're kind of bringing this all over, it's a good discussion now. Could we come back to the reserves?
Sure.
Yep.
I'll just go back to this, David Outman created them. I think we need all of them, maybe one or two we don't fund, but eventually, we should need all of them. We're going to have a few more coming. I'm not in the mood to allocate anything to them yet, so I'm okay to wait for the next couple, two, three to come on board, until we approve them all, right? I think that's okay, and then it's all in one sitting, all in one minute, that sort of thing.
Okay.
It allows Jeff to finalize the wording, I would buy any other comment. And that would suggest that we don't do any reserve reallocation for the sewer at this time.
Yeah, we just, we just get things rolling with the reserves and the language and move it, move that piece forward. I mean, I don't, I don't, I mean, I think it's, what's the word I'm looking for? I think it's physically responsible for us to set them up anyway, even if we don't fund them, because we know part of our job is to anticipate what we, we know we're going to need in the future as well. So I, I agree with you.
And some of those are already needed because the board's already.
Yes.
The designation.
Yeah, that's, that's happened, yeah.
That's happened.
Justin, do you have another time?
So a question for Jeff. I, I can also see where David's going with this, and I, I think that can make sense too. I imagine there's no penalty or, or problem with, if we decide that we didn't need one of these and it wasn't funded, are we able to dissolve it with a, a simple motion and that's not an issue?
To continue that thought, and this just brings us to the eventual reallocation of reserves, particularly for sewer. Until I see where we're going with the sewer long-term capital plan, I don't want to allocate any reserves. From where it is today. I would like to see that long-term capital plan for sewer. Here's what sewer needs. Flush truck, this truck, new building, investment in a bathroom, right? We, I don't even know what bathroom we're picking yet. So it would be nice to know if we're picking a bathroom, how are we funding it? There might be some money in these reserves to fund it. Okay, let's figure it out, right?
Is there any timeline? I mean, do we have any limits as to when this reallocation has to happen? Or it's been sitting there, it can happen at any time?
That's true.
Really? I mean, it's been sitting there for a long time.
No, I understand, but you know, this has been hanging over, this, this is a controller thing that's been hanging over our head.
So the controller's kind of, what are we doing with it?
Yep.
Okay, all right.
Because we're not allocated funds.
All right, that makes sense.
So we want to move it faster rather than slower? We have a budget process coming up for sewer.
So we'll get some more information.
Probably within three months-ish, May 1st, hopefully, right? When budget's due.
And you'll have a better understanding.
Knowing what we're paying for next year on the budget, the, the long-term capital plan, even if it's a preliminary of what the sewer looks like, and then we're like, all right, here's all the things we need, here's what we need to fund, and we move forward and allocate then, rather than doing it here and then saying, hey, we have money in the repair reserve, hey, we have money in the infrastructure reserve, right? And then saying, what are we going to put in the long-term capital plan that fits that amount of money? I'm going to do it, let's plan, what do we need? Back it in, and then allocate.
Understood, understood. I think we're all here in this.
Yes.
Lily.
Did I recall that the board, I requested that the engineer come to our next meeting so that we can get the correct information, the bottom-line information regarding which was Plan 1A and 1B and 1C?
He's scheduled for that.
He's scheduled for that, okay.
That was an action item.
Because once we determine that, then next steps, again, here, my, my simplification, the next step is for the board to decide which plan is most applicable with, and then how that plan was to be implemented as far as funding. There's a certain amount that's coming from our part, a certain amount that's coming to the sewer fund, and a certain amount that will come from, I presume, general fund. So we need to know how much, and that's part of our long-range capital plan.
Yes, which is.
So that's a long-range goal, is to have these facility built?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, no, I'm just, yes, but.
I'm just using that one.
There's just a little pressure to move that along.
Sorry, say that again?
There's just a little pressure to move that along.
Move what along?
The bathrooms.
We would like to do that too. We're waiting for the engineer's comments.
Yeah, we want to move that along. I mean, I guess part of long range, but, no, no, I'd like to see that.
It's part of the long range.
It's a high priority.
Yes.
How about that? Why don't we close that part out? Yeah, Dave.
I did, oh, one other benefit of having the long-term capital plan be done, this both the sewer and the general, in a very presentable manner to the public, is when we look at it, okay, and we look at our budget, and we look at what we're allocating to reserves, we're going to know, we have these things outstanding that we would like to do, but we have these reserves that have no money in them, and we don't have the capacity to do them. Some of these projects, these long-term projects, may be very residential friendly, they may be very visitor-friendly, county-wide friendly, right? And when you have a plan that's all structured nicely like that, where you can say, we have this wonderful thing that we can't afford, that we want to do, you can go sell that to somebody, AKA hire places in government to help fund it, right? It's easier to ask for money when you've got a plan that says, we don't have it for it, right? So we can create in this long-term capital plan, all of this timeline, and then a wish list, which may not include anything that we're going to fund, but things that we would really like, right? I don't think that's the bathroom, but the, the point is, is I'm looking forward to having something that's very presentable.
Do you want to end the conversation on the retirement resolution?
Oh, yeah.
Do we have to leave?
Well, we have a hard stop at 5:30.
No, I mean.
No.